If I can have everyone's attention, I would like to call the December 11th meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order and welcome you. And now Mr. Cleveland is going to do the invocation and pledge for us.
If you'd stand with me. Let us pray. Father, thank you for this evening and for the season that we have. Thank you for the different faiths represented here and for everything that we stand for as the work that we do for the students and for the teachers and for the administration. Thank you for all the things you've given to us and thank you for this time of gratefulness. We just lift up those that are hurting tonight, even in the season, and just ask that your blessings and grace could fall upon them. And especially those that are overseas protecting our freedoms and our rights. Continue to guard them and bring them home safely to their families. Thank you for all you do. In the name of your holy name we pray tonight. Amen. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have the force and agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? A second, a motion by Ann and a second by Nancy, all in favor. Okay. Now, at this point, we have recognitions and we will come down and have recognitions and then if you, we'll take a recess when we finish and if everybody will just stay seated till then and then we'll take a couple-minute recess and if you don't want to stay for the business meeting part, then you can go then, okay? Thank you.
I'm Cindy Sloan and we are here to do our recognitions this evening and this is a great season to be doing these wonderful recognitions tonight. And what Dr. Beard has in his hand, I assume, are the Jim and Nick certificates. Jim and Nick is a great sponsor of this and we have two employees of the month this year, of this month, and I'd like to tell you who they are and tell you something about them and then we'll call them forward and have those of you who are here to support them to stand and all of us join in recognizing them. The first one is a media pair pro at Riverwatch, Julie Evans, and I'd like to tell you some things that were said about her in her application. Julie Evans is an outstanding example of what a team player is. Julie is truly amazing. Because of her knowledge of literature is endless, her readiness to help students knows no bounds and she is committed to helping them be better every day. She is awesome. She has a wonderful work ethic and has so much to offer. Julie is the heart and soul of the Media Center at RMS. I call her Yoda of our media collection because she knows every book on our shelves and can pick the perfect one for a student or teacher. She consistently goes above and beyond what is asked of her and certainly makes all of our jobs at Riverwatch a lot easier. Julie will never ask for a gratitude or recognition, but I know she truly deserves this one. Julie goes above and beyond her description as a Media Center pair pro. She actually serves as the Media Center specialist since our school no longer has a Media Center specialist. She is a phenomenal teacher, mentor, media specialist, friend, support, guide, organizer, event planner, and anything else you might need her for. She is our most MVP, most valuable parent. So, Julie, if you can come up and let's recognize her, those of you who are here to support her. Please do. Congratulations. Thank you, Julie. And the next one is a special ed pair pro at North Forsyth High School, Renita Christopher. Renita goes above and beyond what is expected of her. She is one you can always count on for about a smile and a positive comment. Renita is a pleasure to work with and a treasure in our building. She goes above and beyond to make her students and coworkers feel special. Renita has the best heart. Renita is the most selfless individual you will ever meet. Renita is a ray of sunshine. I can't tell you the times she has been encouraging to me. Renita brings considerable experience managing the mountain of papers associated with special ed and she just makes life easier when she is a lady. Would you please join me and Renita, come forward? He is the middle school water essay contest winner. He got a hundred dollar cash prize at the December 4th awards reception at the Georgia State Capitol. Will you come forward, Kevin? Sit here. Well, let's give him a round of applause. And now have two recognitions from the same middle school. The Georgia Association of Middle School Principals gives out two awards every year. The first one is the Effective Middle School Program Award and it's presented annually to those schools that best exemplify the middle school philosophy as well as academic success based on state and federal mandates. Connie McCrery, Little Mill Middle School, please come forward. And I'm sure there are those of you here to support, you can stand. And also, Georgia Middle School Association, the Georgia Association of Middle School Principals also give the Georgia Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year Award. It is presented to the one assistant principal annually per GHA, JHA, MST district and our own Cheryl Riddle is the recipient of it. And I claim her too because she was, she worked, and we even dressed ourselves. We have two more events. I'd like to call Dr. Marty Bray to introduce to us the BYOT Foundation presentation and then I'll tell you our superior performance spotlight.
The Morrel Foundation has been instrumental in helping raise funds, supply Jeep hotspots to those families out there in our district who need internet access, particularly low SES folks, and they have the latest, what I want to call it, product of all of the hard work that they do in terms of sponsoring a golf tournament and that kind of thing. And as we move forward with our plan for online learning days for school closures, this is going to be a significant boost in helping us address those concerns out there within the community about providing equitable access for everyone in our community. And I really do appreciate what you all have done for us, so thank you very, very much.
I can take just a minute. Please do. I want to thank Dr. Beard and Dr. Bray, thank you so much. I need to say, Megan Farmer, here at the district, they've just been phenomenal in helping us with carrying this out. All I've paid is made this a full-time job. It's been quite a year for us and I can't wait till the night comes when I do it again. And then we're going to pick right back up so you'll be hearing from us. Our sponsors have been incredible, Georgia Orology, Children's Health Care, J-Tech. What a part of what we're doing is a donated device program because there's so many kids that don't have devices much of the center. And we had the first annual BYOT Week at La Niña World, they were sponsored with us for the first time ever, they've never been in the center. Virgil Williams and Missy Burgess there sponsored us and if you brought a device, you could get it free the first week of June. We collected somewhere north of 150 devices. Some of the devices looked like an old remote control, but most were actually smartphones. And so, we're going to J-Tech to get those cleaned and erased and we're going to be able to get the ones that work for kids and we're excited about it. Another thing is our BYOT raffle was held in the spring. We raised just over seventeen thousand dollars, every penny of which stayed at school where the ticket was sold. And Liberty Middle School and Kim Sinns, I were there, raised thirty-six hundred dollars, which was the most of any school, and because of that, they were given a touchscreen monitor from a company called School Touch here in the county. Chris Douglas runs that company and they custom made a monitor for them and they have a media card they can roll around and show the system. So, the financial culmination of all of that this year is right here and we are going to be getting in touch with all of you folks, not for anything except for you to put us in touch with the people you know who might be able to help us help them. It's my pleasure to present you with this check for fifty thousand eighty-four dollars.
Somebody at the beginning of the meeting suggested that I take my smartphone and see if I can, like, do an automatic copy. I could try it a little bit. Thank you all very, very much.
I understand that Kevin Quail came to join us today, so we did give him a round of applause a few minutes ago. So, Kevin, would you come forward and accept our congratulations on your middle school water essay contest win? Here are those of you here who are here to support him, parents and others, so you can stand with us and thank you. Without your support, I know we couldn't have done as well, so thank you for that. It is now time for our superior performance. I have Dawn Martin here from South Forsyth High School to talk to us about this culinary internship. Her advanced culinary students began internship at local restaurants this year. Students rotated through various restaurant concepts for five weeks. The purpose for the internship was to help students understand how to work faster and more efficiently, work with various menu styles, understand how to apply sauce therapy, learn how to use different types of equipment, understand restaurant concepts and type of safety and sanitation skills that they've learned in the classroom. At the end of the experience, students wrote a paper on what they discussed and what they experienced. So, Dawn, turn it over to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Beard and the distinguished board. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and brag on what a phenomenal school system we have and the support that we have, not only locally, but through you guys as well. So, let me just go back just a little bit and tell you, you know, we've had our lab since 2005 and actually, as we're going through and we're looking at the Culinary Arts Program, it's a two-year program, and the first year they learned just basic safety sanitation, knife skills, and yes, we have a cut week and usually we go to Northside. And we try to keep that limited, but we do need their, you know, we want to make sure we're giving them some business as well. And so, after they learn some basics, then they move on into an advanced class the next year and we have them for a little while. And what I started noticing is we have a couple of components. One of the components, this is kind of what they're learning, but some other components, we have not only the academics in here, but there's a work-based learning portion of that and we have a advisory board that helps us with that. And we also have, looking at employability skills and what's going on after they graduate and where can we look at that. And so, since 2005, I started tracking these people that were in our work-based learning program and trying to figure out what are the missing pieces of the puzzle. And even during class, what I noticed is they get back there, they get too familiar with me, and how does it take fifteen minutes to cut a potato? You can't do that in the restaurant industry and so you're trying to say, get quicker, get quicker, let's go, let's go. And I just couldn't figure out, how can we do this? How can we help them understand the urgency of it? We talk about soft skills, we try to get, you know, we're interviewing with them. Dr. Hall put a phenomenal interviewing process for the students in place last year. She has been working with workforce Forsyth for a couple of years and that has been a phenomenal thing. So, we were able to get some other people on the board and as I mentioned it to them this year, they're like, we can do it. Well, being right there at the collections, you would think, my goodness, we have all these restaurants and I was going there, they had no idea. Culinary what? Oh, you mean home ec? No, sir, we don't mean home ec. And so, we're trying to get them to understand what we were doing and that we're service safe certified. We had tried to work with the hospital as well. And last year, right in the middle of teaching, Lynn calls, hey, Dawn, what are you doing? I was like, um, teaching class. And she said, hey, I want you to come over and we've got, we're going to be doing some things, you know, Christmas time, we'd love for you to do some gingerbread houses for us. And I said, hey, Lynn, how about this, we're service safe certified, could we help you serve? And so, that was a phenomenal connection right there. And from that, it just kind of went in the right direction. And what we figured out through working with different people and already having a board, I just went to them and I said, you know what? We've got to figure out something, but these kids need that outlet. Not every one of them have the opportunity to do workforce development. They don't understand that when they get out there, it's not like Food Network and everybody just doesn't become a superstar. And being a dietitian in a hospital setting, that's where I got my start in the food service career. So, I was just, what can we do? So, I went to our administrators and I said, um, any chance we could leave school during the day while they have them? Who would have thought? They would have said yes. And they did. And it has been a phenomenal thing. So, I got people together and we did a five-week rotation and the purpose of this was really to see different concepts because part of what they have to do is they have to design a menu and from the menu, they have to develop a restaurant. Well, how do they do that if they've never seen the back of the house, if they've never seen another restaurant? Well, I had eight suckers who said they would do that in the community and willing to work with us and they actually, I said, not just one group, but two groups. So, they came through and some of the people that were there, Ted's Montana Grill helped us out, Biscuit Barn, Northside Forsyth, and I'll tell you, come back and tell you a little story about that one. And Jim and Nick's, and they have been a phenomenal supporter, not only with you guys, but with us as well. They helped us get into some places that we were unable to because they were saying, you're not eighteen, you can't work here. And that's how we got into Ted's and that's also how we got into Marlow's. Worked with Chick-fil-A already, but they were saying yes. And it was phenomenal because our cafeteria personnel opened their arms, oh, we'd love to have your help, please. And they've all become best friends when they go through the line now, which has been great. And a small caveat with Marlow's is when I called them, it was fabulous. I started talking to a chef and when he picked up the phone, it was one of my former students that went through our program and has become a chef and is doing a phenomenal job. So, it was fabulous and when they went there, he knew what we wanted and he just put them to work and we were able to do some great things. So, through this, they were able to do all that we just said and all that we talked about. And we also had our IT to come together and because it happened before school started, I was like, how am I going to keep up with these kids? How are they going to know if they're here or not? No worries. All they had, they put an app on their phone and they uploaded it and they let me know I ran a report and I knew where everybody was because I told them if they weren't there and if I didn't have that, I, you know, I would be like a national emergency, I would be out looking for them. So, we didn't even have to worry about that. The people that did not have cars, they were able to walk. Those that their parents did not want them to do that, we had the cafeteria. So, we covered all of our bases and everybody was able to do that. And through this experience, yes, they learned a lot of things, not only the soft skills, but we also made some connections. And now with Ted's Montana Grill, they love that because they got to see that they were grinding fresh meat and they got to chill out quite literally in the refrigerator while they were doing that. But they're going to purchase for us some bison buffalo and some meat and come over and do demonstrations for us, which has saved significantly on our budget and things that we haven't been able to do in the past. So, we've made some connections there. Chick-fil-A hired two of our students because they liked them so well. Faken's, Biscuit Barn, I have one of, one of the owners, I have their son in there now, but we're working on a separate project. And with the hospital, that has been phenomenal. A lot of them just really didn't think that that might even be an avenue and they came back and they were like, oh, I want to give, I want to serve. This is so phenomenal. I was really feeling like I helped patients and just, and there were four different avenues that they got to work at there. And they actually went back last week and helped them cater three different events. Thank you, Lynn, for that. And it has just been a fabulous situation. So, I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to let me talk to you about that and to also just be able to, you know, be a part of this community and hearing the different things and if we're still small enough and yet still supportive enough that we can do that and community base is just a phenomenal thing. So, thank y'all for letting me.
I have to tell a story on Dawn. When we first had the program, Dawn was the first one to do it in the county and her mother is a good friend of mine and when they go out to eat dinner in a restaurant, Dawn would be sure to talk to the manager and ask if they had any extra pots and pans or anything. So, that's how that all got started, was her getting thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment donated from every restaurant she went to.
Okay. Now is when we're going to take that two- or three-minute recess I was talking about. So, if you want to stay for our meeting, we would love for you to, but if you have other things you'd rather do, now would be the time you can go. Okay. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor? Animus? And next, public participation, there is none. So, we go to the presentation and discussion items. First is the financial report with Dan Jones. All that money's come in from taxes, I guess.
Trying to figure out, how do I get that big check to the bank? I'll take care of it.
Okay. We have tonight the financial report for the month ending November 2014. We started the month with twenty-five point eight million. And I point out that you can see, the first thing is property taxes, we got seventy-seven and a half million dollars in one month, so that's good. That's what we've been looking for. Our receipts for the month were a little over a hundred million dollars. And then expenses for the month were sixteen and a half million for accounts payable and twelve million for payroll. Total expense, twenty-eight million, six-twenty-seven. And our balance at the end of the month was ninety-seven point six million. And that is three point seven million dollars more than this time last year. We haven't been having that, so I wanted to point that out to you. The budget, we're running these right at sixty, almost sixty-one percent. And expenditures, where, let's go back up to the top. There we go. About forty-five percent and that's right in line with where we should be if it was evenly distributed each month. And you can look through each area and see, and you can see that we've collected eighty-seven percent of our tax money. So, November was a big month for all that to come in. This is a list of all the checks that were written. The schools, I think we had one school that didn't get a report in this earlier board meeting and they just hadn't had time to do it. But the amount of money in all the school accounts is seven million dollars. Our sales tax, sales tax is down a little bit from where it has been, but it's still eleven and a half percent greater than this same time last year. So, November, we'll expect to see a big increase here for November and December. This money is invested and we earned three thousand seven hundred and six dollars in interest and there's thirty-one point three million in that account. And this just gives you a picture of what it looks like, it's been pretty flat. Our 2014 bond money is invested and we earned eleven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars in interest and there's ninety-four point three million in that. Our '07 bond money that's left over, we earned nine hundred and one dollars in interest and there's seven point three million there. The '05, we collected a hundred and sixty-four dollars in interest and there's one point three million in that account. And capital projects, you can see the different bond issues and there's a hundred and three million dollars in that fund. Debt service, here's the sales tax account and what you're seeing here, we had to loan some money to debt service account back last year, make a bond payment, and then when the taxes came in, we paid that back, so that's the five point six million going out. But between the two accounts, the debt service and the sales tax is forty-two point nine million. And that's the report for the month. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have student meal charges with that foul rebours.
I was glad to see this. I had a parent send me an email last week about her child, they didn't know it was exactly what this is for and I was so glad to be able to say, you know, that's going to be on the agenda, so.
Well, bringing this to you in an effort to try to improve our customer service to our students and our parents, our current policy does not allow middle school and high school students to charge any meals. So, we'd like to change that to one. We believe that that will allow students to get the notification they need, that their funds are a little bit low, at the same time allowing them to get a full meal that day and then the next day, they'll be prepared and have the money on their accounts. So, that's what we're looking at here and the changes here reflect that change.
That's a good thing.
Are there any questions or?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing to do because everybody can forget or maybe the money doesn't go through or.
Right. I had an employee of one of the schools who witnessed that happen just too many times and they would constantly, last year all the time, send me notes and give me examples. It was just heartbreaking, so I'm so pleased to see him.
And even if they're not, even if they don't have any money and they've already used this or whatever, there is, they do get a sandwich, right? They could get that.
Yes. That policy remains in place, but this allows them to get a full meal first and then know that that's, you know, something that'll happen next time. Gives them a little bit notice.
Did you see the potential change that might take place in the food service that you won't be required to, you could ask for a waiver on the whole grain, that that's in the budget? That's good. If it passes, it's good. One more step. Right.
Thank you. Okay. Do you need an option for that one, Karen?
That'll sit on the table for thirty days and then we'll vote, right?
Next, we have the action items. And the first one is the, establish the 2015 meeting dates. If you want to, or will it be hard?
No.
Okay. She's going to put it up on the big screen for everybody, but we can talk about it if everybody can pull it up.
Okay. First, I guess we need to have a motion, don't we? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Nancy and a second by Kristen, so now we can discuss it. Does anybody have? I know you see the change for spring break. We all, everybody knows about that and we're good with that.
And like we said, we can always add in a work session if we need to, but we can't.
Who knows? We did last year.
Right. Right.
Okay, so we're, we're set. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
We already got it.
We have the motion.
We just need to vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next we have Mr. Tom leading, with the resolution to adopt the contract for the construction of Brandywine Elementary School and DeSanta Middle School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. So as a preface to the resolution for the general contract for Brandywine, we, as the evaluation committee, received ten competitive proposals, and then went through the best and final offer procurement process to determine the most advantageous to the school district. In addition to that, it's important to note that through the State Department of Education capital outlay, there's an additional nine point five million dollars that gets funded and attributed to this contract. So thus, the formal recommendation, it is recommended that the board approve Charles Black Construction Company Incorporated as the responsible and responsive offer whose proposal is the most advantageous to the board as general contractor for the construction of Brandywine Elementary School. I would recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Kristen and a second by Nancy. Any discussion, questions? We looked it over, and we're glad we have somebody, we're moving forward, I think.
Right, so too.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. Similarly, as a preface to DeSana Middle School, we received five proposals with a corresponding just shy of eleven million dollars, just, it's fifty thousand shy of the eleven million for the similar Department of Education capital outlay. And then as a side note, for the past year, Middle School Ten has been referenced by the Georgia Department of Education, as well as different agencies permitting, et cetera. So please be patient with us in the transition. We just can't name it DeSana. It'll create confusion for multiple other entities, so we're going to be calling it both. Thus, the formal recommendation, it is recommended that the board approve the Evergreen Corporation Doing Business as Evergreen Construction as the responsible and responsive offer whose proposal is the most advantageous to the board as general contractor for the construction of Middle School Number Ten, DeSana Middle School.
I recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom. Any questions, discussion?
Have you worked with him before, Tom?
I have not personally, but not only through due diligence.
Yeah, I know you did.
In the objective criteria, and just a stellar reputation of multiple districts throughout the metropolitan Indiana area, and interestingly, some of their employees have experience building our facilities.
Okay, good.
As well.
Okay, that works.
We look at that as added value advantageous.
Yeah, definitely there. It's just a new name on the street. I just hadn't heard their company before.
Yes, which is healthy for the competition.
Yes, it is. Good.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Tom.
I know that was a lot of work.
It wasn't a lot of work.
Okay, next we have the 2015 legislative priorities with Ms. Jennifer Corretulo.
These are our priorities, our draft of our priorities for 2015, and we took a different approach with our first priority this year. We decided, based on the past experience over the past two years with our community and about the overall wellness of our community, that we decided that we would like to put a child safety initiative to begin with. We support the statewide initiatives to promote the dangers of tobacco, alcohol, and drugs on our youth, and also to educate and assist families in the area of mental health. We have a great partnership going with numerous agencies in our county to work in these areas, and two, some of those are funded by the state, so we would like to see that as a priority. The second priority, our local authority and flexibility, and I know you heard a lot about this at the GSBA conference last week. We believe that local school boards should maintain the constitutional authority in management of issues related to local revenue sources and legislation, and then also that we encourage school districts to implement flexibility in order to increase student achievement and operational effectiveness, and that goes back to our I squared flexibility and the benefits that we've been able to see from that. And the very last one are the responsibilities of the state. We request no further austerity cuts in the QBE funding formula. Since FYO3, the district has not received a hundred and forty-seven million dollars in earnings. Additionally, the district was sensitive to the challenges that the residents faced during the recession, but we've had the student growth still occurring, so we're asking that the state fund the capital state outlay at a hundred percent level for exceptional growth, and that the tax base not become further eroded with exemptions. And lastly, we recommend that a twelve-month waiting period prior to the implementation of new state legislation, along with a complete description of the potential physical, operational, programmatic implementation of the legislation on the school districts.
Okay, with that, I would just comment, you know, there's a number of educational organizations throughout our state, and our legislative priorities certainly align with those other educational organizations, and I think that's important to send a very clear message to our delegation about what those of us who work in this profession need, and to be honest, we deserve in this particular session. We thank Jennifer for her work on this, and I would recommend that the board approve our legislative priorities for 2015.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom. Any discussion or anything anybody else would like to add, or?
Do you think there's any need for us to try to meet with them at all? I know it's kind of late in December, we used to try to do that.
We used to have a legislative breakfast.
But it's so hard to get everybody together.
It is. I went over some of this with Mike, with Representative Dungeon, and he certainly understands and agrees with our concerns, but I have a feeling that this year might be a late education year with other focuses in the state, but. Darrell and I had the opportunity to sit on the flexibility meetings at GSBA, and I really, obviously, think the flexibility showed through, they were showing the alternatives to I squared, and it was very interesting to see how that we were out excelling the other options. So obviously, what we're doing is right for us, so we need that.
And I'll say at the board chair luncheon, that the, one thing they were like, they were, of course, begging is, please just don't do anything, don't add anything new, please don't ask, and so I think that was loud and clear there to our legislators.
And I think some of these, the very first item, I mean, I'm impassioned on that right now, and I talked to Todd Shirley a little bit today about it, and I think we can do stuff local, you know, while it might be, we have to look to the legislature for things. I'm not going to wait on them to do a lot of the things. Now, I have to look to them to fund us and hope and pray they do those things for us, so it doesn't further impact us, but I'm, you know, we need to, as a community, show leadership in a lot of these areas.
To your question, Ann, it probably is too late. I mean, the session will start right after the new year, I think it'd be very hard to pull that together right now, but if that's something that the board wants to do in the future, we could certainly have that, you know, a little earlier in the fall, around November time period after elections, and have that meeting.
It kind of got, we didn't do it because with all the economy going like it was, there really wasn't any reason to do it, but now that things are picking up.
It might be good to start it back next year.
Next year.
We can also send these to the delegation, because I know that the chamber has the pre-legislative luncheon or breakfast, too, that we can attend.
They're implying it's probably going to be a flat budget for us this coming year, so, as long as they don't cut us back.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, next we're to points of information. Do you have anything special?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Number one, we had our principal for a day luncheon earlier this week, and I want to thank all of our participants in the principal for a day program, but I especially want to thank our building principals. Hosting somebody for an entire day is somewhat taxing. It is somewhat stressful as well, but our principals do a great job with that, and it's such a good program because it helps to build those very important relationships. I heard from several members of our community that participated, and the thing that I really appreciate what they said is the demands and the challenges on a building-level administrator, and not only the, being the instructional leader of the school, but also all the things they have to manage on a day-to-day basis. I just think it helps build even greater respect for the profession, and I really am glad the school system has that program, and I look forward to it continuing. Number two, I just want to report, I had my student advisory committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about the new calendar and the inclement weather days, and so, you know, I always believe, if you want to know the truth, just ask the students. And so the high school and middle school students who attended were very positive about the new calendar, and believed for them, it would not be a difficult adjustment at all. In fact, one student said, you know, what took you guys so long? Because that's oftentimes the case, you know, the adults are a little more leery of the technology than the students are, but it was nice to get that feedback from them. They feel like it was the right thing to do, they're very supportive of it, they understand that we're not talking six or eight hours a day in front of a computer screen, they'll be given some flexibility to work on their own pace, they like that a lot, and so they were very supportive, and I just wanted to share that with you. Number three, if you look at our December attendance, we're at forty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-six students for the end of November, and we're only up ninety-five students from the beginning of the school year. And I know when the school year started, there was some concern about, you know, what's going to happen in terms of enrollment as the school year begins, but it has been kind of a very slow, steady growth, but ninety-five students from the beginning of the year. And so that's really all I had to report out.
Okay. Next, we have executive session for personnel. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Tom and a second by Kristen, all in favor? Unanimous.